I'd like to call this special TIF public hearing to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Excused till he gets here.
Okay. Trustee Schroder?
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There is a public hearing scheduled for this evening. The public hearing concerns the proposed First Amendment to the President Street Tax Increment Financing District. I hereby convene the public hearing to consider the approval of a First Amendment to the redevelopment plan and project known as the President Street Redevelopment Project Area and the confirmation of the boundaries in tax increment allocation financing for the President Street TIF District. The Village Board will take no action tonight concerning this matter. Tonight, we will take public comment from all interested persons or effective taxing districts concerning the approval of the First Amendment to the redevelopment plan and project and confirmation of the boundaries and of tax increment financing for the TIF District. At this time, we will have a short presentation from Village staff concerning the statutory notices in conformance with the TIF Act, the Joint Review Board recommendation, and an overview of the proposed amendment to the TIF District.
Thank you, Mayor.
That would be you.
Just to give a brief summary of the proposal, the proposed amendment to the President Street TIF Plan amends the future land use set forth in the plan from mixed-use commercial to mixed-use industrial and commercial. The proposed amendment does not increase the size of the TIF District or lengthen the time of the TIF District. All notices of the proposed public hea-- or I'm sorry, all notices of this public hearing have been provided in accordance with the law, and on May 6, 2009-19, in May 6, 2019, the Joint Review Board meeting for the TIF District met and recommended approval of the proposed amendment. Any questions on the proposal?
Has the village clerk received any written comments regarding the proposed amendment to the TIF District? If so, enter them into the public hearing record.
I have not.
Would any of the trustees like to make comments for the record? At this time, I would ask the Village staff to offer any additional comments they may have.
We have no additional comments.
At this time, those wishing to comment should step forward and state their name, address, and the party they are representing for the record. Please note that we will not answer questions this evening. However, you may contact our Village Administrator, Raquel Becerra, for answers to your questions. So if anybody would like to get up and make public comment regarding the First Amendment to the proposed TIF, please step forward. Since no one wishes to address us on this, a motion to adjourn the public hearing would be in order. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This public hearing is adjourned. And the board meeting will be starting at 7:30. I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of Thursday, June 6, 2019, to order. Would clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Excused.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
Trustee Schroder?
Excused. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, we called the order twice, so... Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to start us off?
I will gladly. The Village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasoned position-- I'm sorry, seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many others. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the Village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandalehighs.org or contact Human Resources at (630) Join us Saturday, August 3, from 10:00 a.m. to noon for coffee with the mayor and Village Board at the Center for Senior Citizens. Please note, there is no coffee with the mayor and Village Board in July. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or Village Board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
GH2O Aquatic Center is open for the season. Stop by and learn about swim lessons, memberships, and more. Come relax in the pool, dive in the deep well, or show us your best moves on the FlowRider. Regular season hours are Monday through Fridays from noon until 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from noon until 7:00 p.m. GH2O Aquatic Center is-- also offers private rentals for you and your friends. Private rentals are available in the evenings and are flexible with water slides, diving boards, and the FlowRider. Inquire today about hosting your next outing at GH2O Aquatic Center. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Join us for a special-- sorry, start that again. Join us for a special Historic House Park-- my goodness, I made a rough one on that one. Join us--
Can we help?
--special Historic House Park Party on Saturday, June 8, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., where we will be celebrating the Village of Glendale Heights' 60th anniversary. Come out to Historic House located at 311 Windy Point Drive and help us celebrate. We will be having a commemorative tree planting of the official Village Tree, the Sunburst Honey Locust Tree, along with games, activities, tours of this historic house as we look back on how far we've come since 1959. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. Hopefully, we'll be better that day.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Get your 2019-2020 Village Vehicle sticker now. The new vehicle sticker must be displayed by 12:01 a.m. July 1, 2019, on the lower right-hand corner of the windshield. Passenger vehicle stickers are $15. Motorcycle tags are $12. Recreational vehicle stickers are $18. And trucks with B-plates are $25. There is an additional price schedule for trucks based on their individual weights. Qualifying senior citizens receive one sticker per household at no charge. Village ordinance restricts overnight parking on Village Streets to those vehicles having a valid vehicle sticker. For more information regarding Village Vehicle stickers, call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Maritato?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Take your summer fun to the next level by attending Glendale Heights Fest, known as one of the western suburbs' premier events. Glendale Heights Fest is Wednesday, July 10 through Sunday, July 14, at Cameron Park, 101 East Fulton Avenue. Enjoy the North American Midway Entertainment Carnival, along with exciting entertainment, rides, and fantastic food booths. Enjoy a dazzling display of fireworks at dusk at Wednesday, July 10, and again Sunday, July 14. Be sure to come by Glendale Heights Fest on Saturday, July 13, as we celebrate the Village of Glendale Heights' 60th anniversary. We will be taking it back to 1959, where it all began with Greece. Theme activities, music through all the ages, vintage TV commercials, and a special surprise at dusk. Be sure to like our Facebook page to stay up to date with important information about this year's Glendale Heights Fest, and visit the Glendale Heights Fest website at www.glandalehighsfest.com. And that was the year I was born, I think, '59.
Yeah. Pat, you're not even close. Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojack?
1859.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
From June 24 through July 9, one day wristbands are only $20 to Glendale Heights Fest, or take advantage of the Megapass, which is good for unlimited rides on all five days of Glendale Heights Fest, and only costs $70. Wristbands and Megapasses are non-transferable and non-refundable. Carnival wristbands are available for purchase at the Village Hall, the Center for Senior Citizens, and the Glendale Heights Sports Hub. Megapasses are only available for purchase at the Sports Hub. Print your wristbands voucher at home. Avoid long lines and buy and print everything you need before heading to the Glendale Heights Fest. For more information on the Glendale Heights Fest, wristbands, Megapasses, and times for which wristbands and Megapasses are valid, please call (630) 260-6000. Visit glendalehighsfest.com or like our Facebook page. The Village of Glendale Heights, in partnership with FOP Lodge 52 and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce, invite you to the 20th Annual Glendale Heights Charity Golf Classic on Friday, June 14, with a 9:00 a.m. shotgun start at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club. This year's Charity Golf Classic will be raising funds for Make-A-Wish Illinois, FOP Lodge 52 Community Enrichment Fund, and the Glendale Heights Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Fund. If you would like more information, wish to become a whole sponsor, or make a raffle prize donation, please call Glendale Lakes Golf Club at (630) 260-0018, or the mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Help us make the 20th Annual Charity Golf Classic another great success. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Next on our agenda, I need to call for a public hearing on June 20, 2019, at 7:30 p.m. by the mayor and Board of Trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2019, and ending April 30, 2020. So if everybody would please mark their calendars.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're welcome.
I think this is the third board meeting in a row that we've had a promotion or sworn in a new officer, and I'm hopeful, well, I know, that this will be the last for a while, right? So Jared, if you can come up here, please? So tonight, we're going to swear in Jared Tomich. He's going to be badge number 3009. I'd like to, again, thank Vic Macias and our Police Commission Chairman, Rick Schwartner, and Esther Wilk, who's out of state today, for all of their hard work and diligence in bringing us the finest officers that DuPage County is going to have, and this marks, I think, our 28th officer hired in the last five years. We've had a lot of turnover. We've got a lot of young, great guys. It's a positive for everybody. Jared comes to us. He's an Oakbrook Terrace resident. He's a graduate of Julia Catholic High School. After high school, he entered the Marine Corps in 2014. Thirteen at four-year, 2014 to 2018 stint. He had two overseas deployments. He's earned the rank of corporal. He's received eight distinguished medals and ribbons throughout his career. He's a brown belt in Marine Corps martial arts. He's here today with his wife, Alyssa, his mother-in-law and father-in-law, Todd and Roxanne, and he is-- his wife, Alyssa, is the granddaughter of retired Deputy Chief John Bosch. Your uncle Rich, who's a Bartlett police officer, is here as well. I've known Rich for a long time. I've known Deputy Chief Bosch my entire career here. So it's nice to have, I don't want to say a Bosch back in the family, but extended. So thank you for being here. Not too much further ado, Marie Schmidt, our village clerk, is going to swear you
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jared E. Tomisch--
I, Jared E. Tomich.
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer--
Having been appointed to the Office of Probationary Police Officer.
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois--
In the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid--
In the county of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm--
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois--
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Probationary Police Officers to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
So Jared is going to be badge number 3009.
Congratulations, Jared.
Thank you.
Happy to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Just don't want to get it lost up here.
So Mayor, you ready for break?
Sure.
So Deputy Chief Bosch, I don't know if it was tradition way back when--
Yep.
But for the last several years, it's been tradition that whenever we swear a new officer in or have a promotion, we have cake. So we're breaking for cake.
This meeting is recessed. Yeah, that sounds good to me. Thank you. I'd like to call this Village Board meeting back to order. We now go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board and an agenda item, please come forward and give your name and address, please, for the record.
Fahad Baligum. My home address or my work address?
You don't have to give-- the address is optional.
Okay. 6542 North Lemay, Lincolnwood, Illinois. I'm here for the last agenda that we-- I was here for, for the parking, the tractor and trailer parking. Again, I just want to state that it's just an increase in business. I think there was some kind of miscommunication last time that they were looking at storage. We're not looking at any kind of storage. It's only when they're staying in the hotel that they get to park their trucks and their That's about it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor, for letting me talk and the board. My name is Ron Sharco. I live in Glendale, Illinois. I've worked at the Ramada Hotel as the caterer for over 20 years. Over 20 years. And in the last year, when I work at the hotel, I have an RV, and I also get a room there, and I drive the RV there, and then after I finish my work, I go to Michigan. And I'm starting to retire a little bit and getting a chance to see other parts of the state. And I was ticketed and asking for a placard, and that's why I sent the letter to Joanne.
Does anybody from the board want to ask any questions? Thank you for your comments. When we come to that item, I'm sure it will be discussed. You have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Schmidt?
Move we adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Number one on new business-- no. I passed up the whole page. Old business. Number one is an ordinance to deny a conditional use to permit outdoor storage of semi-trucks and trailers at 780 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's for the Ramada Inn. This was tabled at the May 16, 2019, meeting, and this would be ordinance number 2019-37.
Excuse me, we need a motion to remove it from the table first.
You're right. First, we need a motion to remove it. Trustee Light?
Motion to remove it from the table.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's off the table, so this would--
Now you're going to the ordinance.
--be an ordinance to deny a conditional use to permit outdoor storage of semi-trucks and trailers at 780 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights. This would be ordinance 2019-37.
This is a-- can I say something, Mayor? It's a little confusing.
Yes.
So a motion to approve this would be a motion to deny the conditional use. So if you do not like outside storage at the Ramada, you would vote in the affirmative to approve. If you-- and there's another ordinance later in your agenda to approve the conditional use, and so you would approve it under New Business Item 2 if you wanted it, and you would vote it down under the first item here. So it's the pleasure of the board. Motion in the affirmative here, just to reiterate, a motion to affirm-- in the affirmative is a motion to deny the conditional use.
Trustee Light?
Motion to approve denial.
Do you want to talk, or is that the second?
Second, I guess.
Yes. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-37 is approved. Joanne, did you have something to say about 2, 3, and 4?
Yes, Mayor. The applicant has requested that the items number 2, 3, and 4 be tabled to the June 20
So I would need a motion from someone to approve and to table an ordinance to rezonate property commonly known as 1 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Trustee Schmidt?
Move we table an ordinance to rezonate property commonly known as 1 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 2 is tabled. Number 3 is an ordinance granting a conditional use for a planned unit development for 1 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Venture 1. This also needs to be tabled to the June 20 meeting. Trustee Schmidt?
Move that we table an ordinance to granting a conditional use for a planned unit development for 1 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Venture 1, until the June 20 meeting.
Did you get a second?
Second.
Yes.
Discussion? No, you don't discuss.
You don't, Mayor.
Motion to table, you don't discuss.
No discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 3 is tabled to the June 20 meeting. Number 4 is a resolution to approve a certain platypary subdivision entitled 1 East North Glendale Heights Subdivision in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This was tabled at the May 16 meeting. We need to remove it from the table and retable it to the June 20 meeting. Trustee Schmidt?
I move we remove this resolution from the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now a motion would be in order to table this item to the June twentieth meeting. Trustee Schmidt?
I move that we table a resolution to approve a certain plat of re-subdivision entitled one East North Glendale Heights subdivision in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois until the June twentieth meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, items two, three, and four are tabled until the June twentieth meeting. Okay. New business, number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. A motion. Trustee Light?
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item two is...
Don't we even go back to the consent agenda first?
No, no.
Okay.
Mayor's handling it.
Okay.
I'm doing it, okay?
Yep.
Thanks. An ordinance to approve a conditional use to permit outdoor storage of semi trucks and trailers at seven eighty East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's Ramada. This is first reading and, no, first reading has been waived. And this would be ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight.
So just, just to be clear.
Okay.
Um, under, uh, uh, old business, um, the board voted to, uh, in the, in the affirmative to deny the conditional use. So here, um, a motion would be in order to approve, but you would vote in the negative, not to tell you what to do, but otherwise it would be inconsistent with what you did in, under old business. This motion would need to fail, um, because we can't deny and then grant. So. Was that as clear as mud?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any discussion?
Oh, there needs a motion, Mayor, to approve.
We need a motion.
So moved?
Trustee Light?
Second.
So a motion to approve, be clear, is, is what was made. And, um, that motion has to fail to be consistent with what was done above.
Any discussion? From the board? Okay, roll call vote.
Trustee Maritato?
No.
Trustee Pochek?
Nay.
Trustee Schmidt?
No.
Trustee...
See, the motion was in the affirmative, just to, the motion was in the affirmative. So, um, you're voting no against the project, which you already did earlier in the meeting. And this motion was in the affirmative to approve. So you, you'd have, no, you're doing it right. Yeah. It would be, it would be failed. I apologize. Sorry, sorry, Bill. Sorry.
Trustee Light?
No.
Apologize.
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-eight.
Fails.
Fails.
Apologize.
You got me all confused.
I did. Me too.
Okay. New business, number three, an ordinance to amend certain sections of chapter two entitled water use in service and chapter three entitled sewer use in service of title nine entitled water and sewer of the municipal code of ordinances of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's first reading. Number four, an ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That is first reading. Number five, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the election districts of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois. That is first reading. Number six, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, approving a first amendment to the redevelopment plan and project for the President Street redevelopment project area. That is first reading. Number seven, an ordinance in the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, confirming and designating the boundaries of the President Street redevelopment project area of said village pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. And that is first reading. Number eight, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, confirming and adopting tax increment allocation financing for the President Street redevelopment project area. And that is first reading. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that would like to address this board and an agenda item, please step forward.
Uh, should I state my name again?
Yes.
Fahad Balagum. Uh, again, I'm not used to this. So was it denied?
Yes.
Okay. That's it. Right? Okay. Is there, can I, is there any explanation behind it or any explanation why it was denied or, um, again, I'm just asking. I don't know how this goes.
There doesn't need to be any explanation whatsoever.
All right.
Unless you want. I mean, it's a, that's the board's prerogative.
Uh, but you said unless I want an ex- uh, you said want something.
Word if they wanted to give any reasons for denying the, uh, conditional use.
Does anybody, Chester?
Well, you were at some of the me- prior meetings and you, you thoroughly understood what was going on, what we required for you, and you failed to do that. We have pictures.
What was required, sir? I'm just asking. Again, I'm, I'm not sure if I get to ask anything, but what was required of me?
Well, first of all, you had certain way that trucks were supposed to be parked, number, number of days they're supposed to be parked. They're supposed to be registered at the, at the desk. I don't know what's happening with your, with your help.
I'm sorry, sir.
Explain it to them or what?
Yes, sir. Did you check with the front desk where, if, uh, there were registered vehicles, sir?
We have pictures.
But you have pictures of my shuttle buses. You, what about...
Uh, our police department, community development department, as well as administration have been out several times to your property. And, um, as we discussed last time, we would be communicating with the board the research that we've done.
Okay, again, now I'm asking a question. I'm not saying anything. You're saying that my staff is not doing their job, but I have everybody's registration on there. Which, which buses or which vehicles are you talking about are parked longer than they're supposed to be?
We can, we can set up a meeting with you and, and talk to you about that, of the, of the observations we've made.
Sure. But, uh, you guys stated that you guys have something, and this is open to discussion, or it's not open to discussion. He's stating something that he's accusing my staff of not doing their job.
No way.
He's blaming me.
Nobody's accusing anybody of anything, but...
It's denied, it's denied. It's over. I understand that.
We have s- there are two buses on your property.
Those are my buses, yes.
But they're not licensed. They, the one bus hasn't been licensed since June of two thousand thirteen. We do not allow a resident to have an unregistered car.
Okay.
Sitting in their lot. And yet you have two buses there and one is full of god knows what, because you can see through the windows. License plates are hanging, the rearview mirrors hanging. Those buses aren't being used for anything except to throw stuff in.
Okay.
And that, right off the bat, that's storage of vehicles that aren't even licensed.
Okay. I understand. That's my vehicle. That's my fault.
I mean, that's, we've got some pictures that aren't very pretty.
Okay, so those are my vehicles. I understand. That's my fault. That's on me. But you're saying there's other vehicles on my property that aren't mine that are not, are being stored there.
Whose pickup truck is in the front lot?
That's my pickup truck.
Which is also not licensed. Which, I mean, it's kind of beat up and old. I get that. But why do you have it parked in front?
Okay, I could park it in back if you guys don't like that es- es- like. But again, you're accused...
Anyway, if you want to set up a meeting...
Sure, but you're saying that there's other cars parked there that aren't mine. Can you tell me which cars aren't?
Don't say, don't talk to it at a meeting when they set it up, okay?
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, wouldn't anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? Chester?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To committee of the whole.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Committee of the whole belongs to... Oh, the one with the hammer?
One with the hammer.
Okay.
This meeting of the committee of the whole for Thursday, June sixth, two thousand nineteen, is called to order. Clerk, please note who's present.
Noted.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Trustee Light?
Uh, events?
Events. Anybody else? Okay. Any public comment on any agenda items? Okay, being done, we have a committee recommendation from the plan commission that is a recommendation to approve an application for an annual entertainment permit to provide live entertainment seven days a week from eleven AM to close. That's one AM on Saturdays through Thursdays and two AM Friday through Saturday for live bands, DJs, karaoke, and acoustic, non-amplified live bands in the outdoor dining area until eight PM. Sporting events, leagues and tournaments which include pool, darts, and bags. All age concerts by the School of Rock. Miscellaneous sporting events. Theatrical performances such as comedy acts, art exhibits and exhibitions. Celebrity performances and appearances. Charity poker tournaments and wrestling shows for Q Bar located at two twenty, twenty-two forty North Bloomingdale Road. Joanne, would you like to present?
Well, I don't know what I can add to that. Actually, um, Mr. Taft has a pla- has, currently has an entertainment permit. And he has requested, uh, approval to expand the options available. Uh, he is here in the audience if you have any specific questions, but, uh, what he, I'll paraphrase, and I'm sure he can correct me if I'm wrong, is that he's not planning on having entertainment every night of the week, but there's frequently instances where a band will be on, en route from Chicago to Milwaukee and they have opportunities arise quickly. So he wants to be able to take advantage of those opportunities where a band may be looking to fill a spot. So he's asked for permission to have the entertainment, the seven days a week. And, um, the acoustical music would still be outside. It would not be ampli- anything amplified outside. It's just really expanding the days of the week. But, um, but Mr. Taft is here as well.
Okay. Police department have any comment?
I was in the original meeting, uh, with them. We met a while ago to talk about this and I have no issues with what he wants to do.
Chester?
Bob, the only, uh, issue I have is from Formos Liquors. I don't buy liquor there. I just go for my Lotto ticket, just to clarify things.
Yeah, okay, Chester.
But, uh, parking, some of your people that go into the sports hub, gambling and that, they park in front of the other units and they're there all day and they eliminate parking for...
Honestly, that's an issue that we have that's actually, I'll be, it's the nail salon people. Because we, we complain all the time because their employees all park in front of us. So it's kind of something that we can all try to work on ourselves, but it's the employees over there that actually block up the whole L right in the corner there.
I mean, that's been ongoing for years.
I know. I'm usually there early in the morning and, and they open the earliest and it's already all full.
I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, I know. That's something that we're, we've talked about in the past and we thought we had it resolved and...
Thank you, Bob.
No problem.
Pat?
Bob, what kind of, uh, rock bands you gonna have? Are you gonna have any of this? I mean, not that I'm against it, rap?
N- no, we don't do anything like that. Honestly, we're not really changing anything we do. I mean, it's, you're, you're gonna notice no difference in our normal day-to-day operations. It's not like we're changing and doing stuff all the time. Uh, kind of like what Joanne said. We have a lot of opportunities that come up on real short notice. Um, where you might have a pass-through for a band is what they call them, you know, things like that where, you know, we have a two-week notice to do them on a Wednesday night, which currently we can't do it on a Wednesday night, uh, where you get them at a real discounted rate because they're going from like, you know, Iowa to, you know, New York or something. And so we can pick up those off things. So it just broadens our possibility to do different things like that. Comedy shows, I know we've turned on a couple of those that we could have some pretty decent name, uh, comedians come in and do stuff, but we couldn't do it on the, those particular nights. So overall, our business model's not changing. It's not like we're gonna be doing bands all the time or anything like that. It'd be the same sort of entertainment format that we've had.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
I just want to make a recommendation to move it to the board with the, um, to concur.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Recommendation to the board with the meeting, uh, to the board with a recommendation to concur. Trustee Light, events?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring attention to the village and all its events that we have planned for this summer and how excited I am to see so many of them along with our sixtieth anniversary and, and our fest and all the other little things that take place. And one of them kind of caught my, my eye and that was their cardboard boat regatta that we're going to go ahead and give it a try. I mean, I, I find it really, really kind of neat to, I want to see how many kids come out to actually get involved in this. Bring dads, moms, and, you know, your best creative ideas. And I'm gonna do everything I can to be there to see if I can help in any way with some of the, the building or creating of this. So I really want to see everyone come out. Keith, exactly what were the days on that? I'm gonna put you on the spot now.
Put me on the spot. I believe it's the twenty-ninth. I will reconfirm that, but I'm pretty sure it's on the twenty-ninth from one to four.
Of June?
June. I'm sorry, yes, of June.
Thank you. That was it. I just wanted to say thanks to everybody in the village and, and thank you for making it really a great place to live.
Yeah, this is the first time I've heard about this boat regatta. Uh, what's going on in, for the sixtieth? I have nothing. Not even a list of what's going on.
That's because it's not on the list.
How did he find out?
I know everything.
There's a sixtieth anniversary committee and so we will communicate and it will, in an email, we'll send you what, what's planned. But we've been planning for it, for the, when it, when it starts in July.
We're not left in the dark.
Yeah, no, it, we're making final plans for it, so...
I didn't even know when the boat regatta was. I just know they've been talking about one for years.
I'm kind of curious. I'm on the, I'm the, I'm the park chairman and I don't even know about it.
This is at the pool. This isn't in a lake or anything. This is just at the pool. This is a pool activity that we're doing on June twenty-ninth. It's listed in our brochure.
That's all I had.
It's not my meeting.
All right. Anything further? Chester?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.